Okay, it's four o'clock, so we're gonna call this meeting in order for December. And the first item up is Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Booth.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, Saint and one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission statement will be read by Ms. Eltha Booth.
Both of County Schools will provide quality educational programs and services to ensure a student academic and vocational success.
Thank you. Do we have anyone sign up for public comments? No? Okay, at this time in December, we normally handle our board elections. I'm gonna just leave this up to what the board wants to do. I'm missing a member over on my right who is on his way here. It was suggested to me we could go ahead and do the recognition if y'all wanna do that. But what are y'all's thoughts?
I think it's a busy time of year for these families, and why don't we do our Christmas card recognition?
Let them go. They probably want to hear all the little hit that stuff anyway. Okay, so we're gonna just, well, we can approve the agenda and still just move that. Then the next thing would be to approve the agenda, and so we'll move the board member elections down to, you wanna make it the first item of no action and see if he shows up by then? So we can do that. So with that changed, would I get a motion to approve the?
Move, uh, vote. Move to approve the agenda.
Okay, got a motion, a second on the agenda amended. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Well, let's just go and do the minutes, and then we can move straight in. Approval of the minutes will be next, and if you open that up, you'll see attached, and I'm sure you've had chances to look at those. There's four different sets. What's your pleasure?
With approval.
Okay, got a motion, a second on the minutes. Any questions?
I'm gonna recuse myself from the November 21st.
Okay.
Because I was not here.
You got you. Got Elizabeth? Okay, so with that noted, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed any of this? Okay, that's it. And that'll carry us into recognition on the agenda. And I think Dr. Phillips is gonna be handling that.
Each year, we do a superintendent Christmas card, not a contest, but we have an activity where we have students that contribute artwork, and then we pick the artwork, and we have a formal Christmas card. And I wanted to recognize, this year, we're doing an elementary, middle, and high school award winner, and then we have kind of the grand prize winner, and that becomes the official Christmas card for the county, and we're gonna give that winner a copy of some cards that they can distribute. But I'd like to ask, is it Eli Lopez to come forward? He's from John Small Elementary, and he is the elementary winner, and you can see the artwork behind you. We have framed the artwork for you to have. That's what it looks like right there. And this is a copy of the certificate to the set of the elementary winner. I'd like to give that to you, tell you did a great job, and ask you to go around and shake the hand of the board if you can.
Congratulations. Good job.
Good job.
We'll ask you to come back up in a minute and get a picture with us, okay? And from Northeast Elementary School, Ben King, and this is a middle school division winner. Come on up. See a copy of it projected back there, and that's what it looks like framed. Congratulations. Well done. I'd ask you to greet the board.
Good job.
Good work. Little picture, that's right.
And our winner this year, overall winner from Northside High School, I wanna make sure I say the name right, Laney or Lanny? Laney Watson. Laney, come forward if you would. You can see it displayed there as well. This is what it looks like framed. Chance to see that? Give it a certificate. And this is what the Christmas card actually looks like, and we're gonna give you a copy of those, a set that you can send out to your friends and family. Congratulations.
Great job.
Let me get all of our winners to come up and wish their artwork if you would, and we'd love that picture.
No recognition this month, does it? Okay. Well, this month was short, but very sweet and important on recognitions. At this time, we're getting ready to move into the main meeting, which you're welcome to stay, but we usually would take a quick break if you came for that part and you wished to leave. This would be a great time, and so we'll pause for about a minute, but thank you for coming if you choose to leave. And we hope all of you have a nice Christmas and holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Any other questions? It's a pretty good attempt, except for staying. Our Wendy's bad, and you see her about there. Yeah, that's the thing, everybody, Wendy didn't stay in there.
Great artwork.
Yeah, you didn't get home from. That's no when you got her, but we'll just stop when you get her off the phone. I don't know. No, wait, I figured you knew. Truly nothing else to do. I told you, that's down to Wendy and Stan. Glad y'all could stay. And Martin, Martin, well, he probably didn't want us to stay, he just feels obligated to stay. Yeah, Randy, he hides off in the corner, though, so. I'm waiting, if I'm stalling, yes, we got a phone call going over here to a board member. I'm waiting to see if we get her hooked up to us or not. And if she doesn't answer, that's no fault of ours, is it? You wanna try, you wanna try one more time right quick? And then we'll zip through this agenda like hot butter, like hot nitrogen butter. What that saying is, I don't even know. Give her one more ring, and then we're gonna move on. I hear there's some hungry people. Next time, just buy them all.
Barbara, sister? Hey, I'm with her at the, you know, party in Delaware. Okay, how many, did you want speakerphone? Are you there?
I'm here.
Oh, that's my, I hear her better than I do someone.
Hello, hello.
Can you hear everybody?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna put the thing right here. If you can't hear, you let us know, okay?
Okay.
Hey, Barbara, it's Terry. I hear you better than I do some of the ones in the room.
Hello, hello. I'm just really here 'cause I'm on the phone with her.
Okay, well, we'll try to speak up then, or I'll let Lisa sit there, she can repeat everything we say. We are at the board member elections point, and I'm gonna turn it over to Don, 'cause he, oh, she's moved the phone on me, 'cause she handles that.
Okay.
You hearing us okay?
Okay.
Oh, okay, but just before I do, Don, can I say something?
Sure, sure.
Tonight marks, for some of those that haven't been here as long, tonight marks seven years that I've been on this board, either a day or two away, but it was December seven years ago, and I have served as your vice chair and chairman for five years, never intended to stay around for five years. But I just wanna say, and I think everybody already knows, but I just wanna make it official, I'm not accepting any part of this moving forward. I'll stay on as a board member, but I'm leaving this middle chair hopefully in about two minutes. And good luck to whoever the board elects to take over. They'll have my support and my best wishes. But I did wanna just say, everybody on this board has been supportive of me, and I absolutely have loved working with every one of you. And hopefully, you'll be that kind to the next chairperson, whoever it is. But thanks for keeping up with me and keeping me straight. As E.C. says, she told me when I first got here, "Watch my mouth," and I told her, "Well, if I get out of line, just give me the evil eye," and she's always done that. Okay, with that, Don, she's all yours.
We certainly appreciate your leadership.
No problem.
We go through the process of electing the chairperson first. In fact, our bylaws and the policies that we say have do that. After we have that person in place, I'll turn it over to them to carry out the nominations and election for the vice chair. So at this point, we'll also, after we have the nominations and we close nominations, I'll ask you to vote by acclamation, which be a raising of your hands, so that we can see how you vote, and we'll record that, and then we'll move forward. So to get things started, what we need is nominations from the board for the chairperson position.
Don, Dr. Phillips, I nominate Mac Hodges as chair for the board.
Okay. And I'd like to nominate our vice chair to move up to that position. Carolyn Walker.
So we have Mac Hodges and Carolyn Walker. Any other nominations?
My nomination nomination is closed.
Motion to close nominations, a second. Motion's properly seconded, any discussion? All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Yeah.
We'll go through the vote then, since Mac was nominated first. Those in favor of Mac Hodges, and Barbara, I guess you'll just need to tell me a name when we get to that point.
Just tell us you raised your hand or not.
Those in favor of Mac, if you would, show that support by raising your hand. Okay. And Carolyn Walker?
Oh.
And Barbara, who did, who did you vote?
Land and Karen.
Oh, no. Mac was nominated, both were nominated for the chairperson position, so you have to vote for one of those.
Okay, next.
Okay, so is that five to four? Okay, Mac, you're, so Mac's been elected as the chair?
Oh, you come on this chair? No, 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 no. I believe when y'all let me, you made me come on, take it. No, no, no. Well, you're the chair, so you can do what you want. No, I'm gonna sit right here. I'm happy right where I'm at. Okay? I'll put the rest of the meeting.
Okay. You wanna handle the chair, vice chair?
I'll handle the, the floor is now the nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Michael Bilbro.
All right, now, can I ask, since I'm in this position as of right now, can I make a nomination?
You have all rights of every member.
All right, I would like to nominate Ms. Eltha Booth, since she's just recipient of the new all-state school board. She's deserving of it as well.
Well, I nominated so much, I don't think I can say anything.
Is there any more nominations?
I'm making a nomination that we close.
I'd rather do that. I don't want to be the only one to say something.
You say.
I know, but I'd be, I nominated, but I didn't wanna close it too, I feel somebody else.
We got a motion to close nominations?
A second.
All right, second. All right. Okay, we're gonna go in the order that they were, that they were brought in. Okay?
Let me make sure Barbara knows.
Okay.
Barbara, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
We have the two, the two nominations, this is for the vice chair position, are Michael Bilbro and Eltha Booth. And we're getting ready to vote, okay?
Okay.
Okay. By a sign of hands, all in favor of Michael Bilbro, vice chair, raise your hand. All in favor of Ms. Booth, raise your hand.
And Barbara, between Michael Bilbro?
Eltha Booth.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Would you like, go ahead?
Y'all sure y'all don't wanna come get these chairs?
No, I'm perfectly fine sitting right here.
Ms. Booth is a vice chair.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm good.
Are you gonna stay on, or are you dropping off at this point?
I'm fine with y'all.
Okay. Merry Christmas.
Better things to do. Better things to do.
Yeah, better things to do. There you go. All right. I'd just like to say one thing, I appreciate your support. I will do the best I can, and my phone line is always open. Feel free to give me a call, and if I need to do anything for you, just let me know. Okay?
And I would like to say, as a supporter, to not only to our chair, but to the board, I stretch my hands to do what I can to help, and will be supportive, as I always have.
Okay. All right.
Moving along with the agenda, we're going down to item, discussion, action, no action, I believe it is. My computer's playing tricks with me here.
That'll be capital budget update.
Capital budget update, Mr. Stan Hudson.
Reminder, no action tonight, it's just an update. Over the Christmas, Christmas break, we plan to do the Southside GM Hall floorway and the Chalkwood Primary awnings, the two awnings, we'll be starting in 19th, weather permitting. That's the only two things I have, just as an update. The Southside High School storefront, exterior storefront, we have taken that down. There are some pictures attached, Ms. Lisa Wright. There's three pictures attached that shows the current, what we found, and there was nothing to tie the exterior fascia block at the bottom to the foundation. It was just there with mortar, and the best thing that engineer can find is that the water got behind it and swelled it, behind it and froze it, broke it out. The foundation is in great shape below. Is that the first picture, Mr. Terry?
This one right here.
The first one shows the bricks, the way they came off, the very first picture that's attached. That's the row lock at the bottom, the storefront was sitting on top of it, and just moisture and water behind it broke it out. We actually dug down three foot to the bottom foundation in three different spots. The foundation's in great shape, so the engineer's designing us some kind of faster to go between the foundation and the new brick to be put back, and then our existing storefront to be put back. But that's where we at on that, we're kinda opening it up a can and trying to fix it from the bottom up. It was poor construction, original destruction.
That can't last that long, wedding. So what's, this is wood here?
There was wood filler underneath it, yes, sir, that's, that's the moisture barrier there, but that was wood filler between the bottom of the storefront and the.
So down here.
Well, it was actually right here at the top on the foundation. Wait, you're right, right there where your picture was, it was laying in between, yes, sir, correct, yep. They filled it with wood, regular old wood, nothing moisturated, no plastic, they filled it with wood.
It wasn't even treated, treated?
No treated, no anything. It was just plywood and wood.
And there weren't any ties tying the bricks?
No ties, nothing tying it together but mortar, and of course, water got into cracks and out it came.
The end of that.
It's just a miracle that it lasted that long. Yes, sir. Any question about my three things?
Now, how much work will you be doing this holiday season?
Well, we're getting these three jobs done, trying to work on the Southside, the Chalkwood, Southside hallway will be going on, and the two awnings at CPS. And then we'll be doing a few water shutdowns and stuff at Eastern, just our general maintenance work that we're doing by the studio trap.
What did we end up doing about all that glass coming to the surfaces at Eastern?
We're working, there's supposed to be a fellow here Thursday, we're actually gonna take some core samples, gonna go in and just do it in different areas to see how much is really there. We come up with one idea to terrace it down, but then the playgrounds are sitting at angles, so if we terrace it, one end of playground's gonna be in the ground. So we either have to take the playgrounds up and level them, if we terrace it and level it, and we're gonna level our playgrounds, or we're looking at other things about possibly digging down, depending on how deep it is, removing it and seeing which way is cost-effective to fix it. So I've contracted a company to come in, it'll be Thursday morning, nine o'clock, with a source, with a source sampling bit to go down and actually see how much we have.
I was gonna say, it's gonna be a long-term fix.
Yes, I don't think it's anything we can fix with the students unless we just totally move them off, totally away. It's gonna be a big undertaking.
I know we, we put a lot of asphalt projects on hold because of the compressors at Washington, or Southside, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
What are you doing about little potholes and?
We use cold patch, we buy the maintenance budget and prepare it to it Northside.
Okay.
Yeah, we're supposed to be down tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah. Weather permitting, we got to get in there and fix them, we got, get it dry.
That one, Northside, will knock your teeth out.
Yeah. It'll. Mr. Clark wrote it up yesterday, so we're, we're aware.
Any other?
Thank y'all. Y'all having a Merry Christmas?
You too. Have a Merry Christmas.
Okay. Mr. Mark Dunn?
Yes, sir. One of the board's policies that we pulled out of the first reading at the last meeting was teacher contract policy 7410, and the reason being that this is the first year since the General Assembly did away with what we used to know as probationary and tenure contracts for teachers, that school systems have a parameter that they can follow to award contracts. So what we've done is we've given our principals and talked to the school administrators about what different types of contracts, we've asked them to speak with teachers, school improvement team members, various interest groups. We're also meeting with our colleagues across the region. There's been some call, maybe that all of us might agree on one type of contract, so we're not competing with each other about contracts. And just to kinda let you know, that's, that's where we're at. We'll continue those discussions in January and then hope to come back to you maybe as early as February with the final policy. But there are just a lot of different choices, and we're trying to hammer out which one is best for our folks.
We've got a regional wide meeting with the superintendent center region and the HR directors in January, and we're gonna go over each option and spend some time really going into detail about it, so that when we come back, we've made the best decision for us.
Any questions for Mr. Dunn? Seeing none, moving down to the next item. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So, oh, well, you got, have a.
Can we, can we?
You have to read that. Go down to the first.
Yeah, we're going through it this.
Okay, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321.
All right, got a motion, got a second. All in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed? Now in closed session, Mr. Walker. We're back in open session. First item of business is to approve the personnel agenda that was presented.
Same with Mr. Chair.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Second. All right, got a second. All in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right, 7.2, substitute teacher.
Yes, sir, I just wanna make sure, get the board's approval on an issue that, it's, I think it's a good thing for our retired teachers. Currently, this is our policy. If we have a vacancy and we can't fill it, and we use a retired teacher who's on the sub-list, and that retired teacher's license is still fully effective, then we're able to use state substitute funds, but we're able to also pay them at the higher teacher rate. And we do that when they're gonna be in a position for a long term, they're meeting parents, they're doing lesson plans, for all intensive purposes, they are the teacher until we find someone. That's been in policy, that's, there's no change to that. If we have a teacher that goes on to leave absence for a long period of time, usually more than a month or so, if that teacher has plenty of sick leave to use, for, let's say their teacher's gonna be out for two months, and the first month, they have enough sick leave to cover the first month, then a retired teacher who takes their spot only gets the regular substitute paid. And then let's say for the second month, the teacher's out, they run out of any kind of paid leave, then we are able to give the retired teacher full pay again, because we're not paying two people in the same position. And that's been working fine, there's no need for a change for that. One of the areas that we very rarely run into, it's only happened twice in this first semester, and happened maybe one time last, all of last year, is occasionally, we'll have an employee who has lots of sick leave and lots of paid leave, and those individuals, maybe they're gonna be gone for two or three months, and we're able to find a retired teacher to take their spot, they're doing all the lesson plans, they're meeting with parents, they're doing every full responsibility of a teacher, but because the individual they're subbing for has plenty of leave, we can't pay them out of the state substitute funds any more than the regular sub-rate. We can't give them their full pay, like we would do if the person didn't have any leave or was vacant. But what we could do is take the difference between state sub-rate, which is $103 a day if you have a teaching license, and their actual daily rate, which for some folks can be anywhere from $200 to $300 a day. If we wanted to pay the difference out of local funds, we could do that. So what we're proposing and asking your permission to do is to essentially say, if we have a person in a long term, which is defined as usually more than a month, and they're doing everything that the normal teacher would be doing, that we use local funds to make up the difference, so they get full teacher pay. It is generally pretty rare, but on those occasions, obviously, we need your permission to kinda change the use of those local funds. So that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Dunn? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept his proposal. I'll make a motion to accept. All right, got a motion, got a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed? Thank you, sir. All right, 7.3, Southside High School.
Had a request that came to me from Joe Koch from Southside High School, they would like to add JV girls basketball. They have the uniforms, everything's in place, all we would need to do would be to pay the coaching supplement for that position, which was actually on personnel agenda just a few minutes ago, but to make it official, we, we wanted to bring it before you and ask for your approval of that.
They've never had it before?
If they've ever had it, they haven't had it.
I think they had it in the past, but I think the numbers were so low that it's dropped, there's a certain number.
I thought they had it one time.
And apparently, the numbers are up this year, so that they can have a JV team.
But because, because there's a coaching supplement involved, we wanted to make sure that the board was aware and got approval for it.
You've heard the request, so I have a motion to accept. All right, got a motion, got a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. 7.2, policy update.
There were about 150 pages of policies, if you went through those, and I've tried to go through, and we give those out to individuals that are most directly involved with that throughout the school system, and also Kim Edwards to get some feedback. In the original list, I don't know how many policies there were, but there are three that I'm pulling, I just wanted you to be aware, when we vote tonight, we're not including, I put some narrative in here that you can look at. We've pulled 2310, 3530, and 7410. 7410 deals with some certification licensure issues that Mark is gonna come back with you later. 2310 and 3530 are two policies that I feel like I need a little bit more insight from Kim Edwards on the legal side before we come back. Neither of those are time press sensitive, so we can deal with that in January. But I wanna go through a couple of them. A lot of them deal with procedural changes, and there's some, some things that are updated because of some requirements, and others are recommended that we do that from the board's perspective. But Policy 2400, we're only updating legal references, and this is a policy that the School Board Association said, if we had a restart school, there were some things that needed to be put in place from a policy standpoint. We don't have a restart school. If we, if we did have a restart school, we would come back and ask for the board to do some policy updates that would allow us some leverage and flexibility to do some things there that we can't. So all that we're looking at is updating legal references only, just for your information. Policy 2670 is a new policy, and we've revised the policy, and this is a policy that's a mandate by the state, the General Assembly, that requires us to have what's called a Business Advisory Council. And you'll see that the next item agenda for us is a Business Advisory Council. This is a good example of where I feel like our school system is a little bit ahead of what the state's doing in, in general. We've had a Business Advisory Council that's operated since before I became superintendent, and it's a group of individuals, they're not called that, they've been called a couple of different names throughout the years. Right now, it's called the Business and Industry Innovation Council, and it's made up of this, really the same individuals that this law is, is writing in that says we have to have. And I wanted you to be aware that we're asking you to include certain individuals in 7.5, but those individuals are currently serving on that existing committee. but those individuals are currently serving on that existing committee. If we don't do that, we're required to put this council together. And if we don't merge the two, then we're requiring the same group of people to come together under two different names at two different times, and we want to be sensitive to the times of those individuals. So we'll be bringing that back to you. The only change from what you, that we've changed, that we've made since the original policy was there, was we changed the number for membership to have a minimum of nine and a maximum of 15. And that way, we're allowed to keep in line with what we currently have in our county. And in Policy 3300, there are some new requirements regarding school calendars. This does not affect when we begin and end school, but the three things I want you and the public to be aware of. Number one, students must be instructed on the significance of Memorial Day, that's now written in as a requirement. Number two, September the 17th is Constitutional Day and Citizenship Day, and each principal must ensure that an educational program about the importance of the U.S. Constitution is held on that day. And I certainly want our public to know, we talk about the U.S. Constitution more than just on one day, but we're required to do some activities on that day. And if students are in school on that day, it has to be done on the 17th. If students are not required to attend on the 17th, the same educational program must be presented to students during the week prior to Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. So that's something we have to have in place. We have a lot of constitutional activities going on, we just have to make sure that we reflect those at the appropriate time. And then finally, November has to be designated statewide as Veterans History Awareness Month, and we'll make that known for everyone to see. That doesn't impact what we have on our calendar, but there are some changes that are required I wanted you to be aware of. Policy 3460, this keeps reference to state mandated requirements and local requirements. And what this means is that if there were no more local requirements above the state, there was some recommended language that goes into that policy. We require as a board, a local requirement of six elective classes above and beyond what the state requirement is. So our graduation requirement at the high school level is 28 credits, the state requirement is 22. We've always been above, so we're going to keep some language in and make sure that you're aware of that. And then finally, there is a policy that deals with medicine and the administration of medication, is Policy 6125. We'd like to approve it as presented with additional changes in Section D, paragraphs two and three, and this would relate to the section on self-medication. So if students bring in over-the-counter medication, depending on their age, there's certain things that we have allowances for. So this makes sure that the policies are consistent throughout. So with that being said, all the others, if you've seen the matrix, you've gone through that, they're being presented for you as presented in the review, with the exception of the three that we're pulling out. And we'll probably bring those back to you in January or February. In addition to that, the policy updates, you have that, that's the matrix with the policy behind it. There are also some legal references, which is policy, part of the customization process we have. Anytime there's legislative changes that impact us on a legal standpoint, they go back through and rewrite the policies with the references and the changes that are there. That's what's under the Legal References tab, we're required to do that. So you see that for your information, they have to be approved, but we're required to make those changes, so there's really not a lot of option that we have on those. So with that being said, if you have questions, I'm glad to entertain those. If not, I'd like to ask for your approval on both of those items.
You want to do both the updates and Business Advisory Council together?
Yeah, we'll do the Business Advisory, because I have to go into some individuals as a separate item.
Okay. All right, you've heard the superintendent's request, we have a motion to accept.
Some moves, Mr. Chair.
All right, got a motion, do a second?
Second.
All right. No further discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
One of the requirements that we have for the Business Advisory Council, and we just adopted that policy, is we have to have the membership, and this is really a work that's done by the school system, which is different than what that council has been operating on before. The individuals that are going to be put in the council will serve in either a one, two, three, or four-year term, and you all will do that. But what I wanted to give you tonight, and we have to have members announced by the 1st of January, this is taking the individuals that are on that Business and Industry Innovation Council, and we've added a few to it just so that we get to 15. But it includes the superintendent of the school system, the president of the community college, it includes a principal from the school system, our CTE director by law has to serve as a secretary and they're a non-voting member. We've always had a Beaufort County Commissioner, we've had Beaufort County NC Works Career Center representative, we try to have the leaders of those organizations when we can. The Beaufort County Economic Development Director, a representative from the Mideast Commission, a Chamber of Commerce is represented. And right now, we have the City of Bellhaven, and we also have the Washington and Beaufort County Chamber of Commerce. And then we have six slots that are open for business, industry, or citizens, and that could include any individuals there. What the law says is they like to have a majority of the individuals on this council to be representatives of the industry world, and we've tried to do that. But we didn't put names in because sometimes these individuals change. I can come back to you with actual names and the, Wendy, I don't think we have the year, yearly appointments in terms of who's four-year, three-year, and two. What I want to be able to do tonight was to be able to say we have officially appointed the positions to the committee, and we'll come back to you in January with those, that little bit finer detail, if that's okay with you all. We have a procedure in place for someone who wants to join the council. I'm not aware that we've ever had anybody who said they want to be a part of it that has not been a part of it, but there's a procedure to go through. Even if they don't make up the 15 that are formal members, if they want to come and they want to sit and be a part of what we do, they're certainly welcome to do that. So this is just putting in place things that meet the letter of the law, but it's something we've been doing in Beaufort County for a long time. So what I'm seeking tonight would be that these, the people representing these positions, and I'll give you names at our next meeting, would be the individuals that we are putting on the Beaufort County Schools Business Advisory Council.
Oh, no, I just counted, I think the policies in between nine and 15, if you use, what'd you say, three chambers of commerce?
They're not, they may not all be members, they may be, but right now, we have just a spot for Chamber of Commerce. We have both that are there.
Okay.
But again, there are several individuals that are there at the meetings that may not be official members of the council.
Okay, I see, because that list would put us over 15.
That's right. Unless we eliminated one of the Business and Industry, and you could argue that that other individual representing whichever other chamber could be representing Business and Industry.
Move through them.
Okay. Got a motion, second? Got a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Dr. Phillips, want to talk about the calendar?
School Calendar Committee met a couple of weeks ago. We went through the process of, you have to pick a beginning and ending date, which is really given to you by the state, and then you go through the process. We had two versions of a calendar, we had a draft A and a draft B, and we sent that out to employees and asked them to take a look at it and vote. And the final results are what you see in front of you. Draft A garnered 74.4% of the vote across the county, and what was Plan B garnered 21.4 and then 4.2, so they didn't have an opinion one way or the other. So what we've got in front of you is for the traditional schools, everybody but early college would be operating on draft A, and then you have the early college high school calendar. And one of the things that came up, one of the questions that I was asked was about us putting the high schools on the early college calendar, which is an option that's been there in the past. And we had some pushback in the community, folks didn't want their high school students to be on a different calendar than their middle or elementary, some of them were taking care of childcare and stuff like that. That may be something that we bring back up when the Calendar Committee for the following year meets, but at this point, what we're asking for would be, we're mandated by law that we begin on the 27th, the end of school will be on the 11th. And then we've put in the appropriate number of vacation days, annual leave days, and teacher work days. We've tried to follow the lead that we started a couple of years ago, which our Calendar Committee and the folks we send this out to appreciate, we try to have some type of a day every month where teachers have their work day. We have an early release day at the end of the first grading period, which falls on October the 30th, and then we have an early release day when students get out for the Christmas, before the Christmas break on the 21st. And then March the 29th is an early release day that marks the end of the grading period. Those are the only early release days that we have. The purple days are required work days, the green days are optional teacher work days, red are state holidays, and yellow are annual leave days. So you see from this calendar, it's probably the longest Christmas break that we've had in a while. This year, we come back on January the 2nd, and we're trying to look at things, if you stretch that out, then you create a very short week, but we have to have, we have to use 10 annual leave days. And, you know, when you put those out, it left the 4th of January kind of as an open date, and we didn't want students to come back on the 4th, it made no sense. So we added that as an optional work day, so that if teachers want to come in, they can, but because it's optional, they're not required to. But again, this garnered about 75% of the vote, and I'm just presenting this in the early college calendar for you for approval, and we'll get this disseminated, assuming we get that approval.
I'm showing it as a required work day.
Which one?
Talking about the 4th of January?
It's not, it's in green, isn't it?
Yeah.
The green is an optional work day, and purple is a required.
Is that two, what year?
2019.
19. Am I looking at, yeah, mine's purple.
Are you looking at?
You may be looking at-
Oh, I'm looking at the, I may be looking at the other calendar.
Yeah, you might be looking at that.
And their days are a little different because they start earlier than we do, so they have to use up their basic.
I'm sorry.
And they also have their semester break before we get out for the Christmas break, so they're slightly different than we are when we get to that point.
So there's been no movement from the state to allow us to start school earlier?
What I'm told is that the House is interested in pursuing it, the Senate leadership will not allow it to even come to the floor. We continue to push that. Every different group body, the superintendents, the principals, the School Board Association have that as one of their legislative priorities, but we just can't get any movement at the state level. All we're asking for is local control, and that's, and be reasonable about it, but allow us to pick-
Because it doesn't make any sense for school to start much later than the colleges do.
That's what we'd like to be on the same calendar.
Right.
Or similar as we can.
At least be able to choose.
That's right. So we'll continue to advocate for that.
The state still is not allowing us to do that.
And we don't qualify for waivers because we don't miss enough days for weather. If you're a mountain county and you have a lot of days out for snow, then you have the ability to start early, but we don't qualify for any of that.
You've heard the request, do I have a motion to accept?
Some moves, Mr. Chair.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Move down to updates. I tips.
Calendar update first, we have two dates, and we did adjust these slightly because we had, I think our board meeting originally would have been scheduled right after we came back on the 2nd of January. So we moved those back a week, so our work session will be on the 9th of January at 5:00, and our regular board meeting for January will be on the 23rd. What I would like you to look at, if it's possible, I feel like we need to have a board retreat, and we've done that the last few years in January, to talk about a variety of topics, and then also kick off a little bit of our conversation about budgets. And the days that I'd like to look at, it'll take us about two hours. If we could do it on the 16th of January, or the 22nd would be my choice, the 22nd would be right before our board meeting on the 23rd.
No, the 16th.
So the 16th would be my first choice, but I don't know what your calendars look like.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but is there any thought, I mean, as we're coming into the new year, New Year is being 2018, any thought of entertaining, getting together and talking to the community about whittiness?
Okay.
I mean, because I think we need to come together as a team to address that, maybe even the academic board, because, I mean, we're still getting a lot of calls from the community.
I just love to get some-
You know, and instead of just letting them sit out there like a fish out of water, kind of address it, I mean, the paper's done it a couple of different ways, but I don't think we, as a board, have addressed anything.
Well, I'd like to have that, one of the topics, the curriculum piece, and then we can schedule something I'd like to do if we're going to do it in the month of January.
I mean, maybe we have to have more than one, because, I mean, we kind of got to go to their areas, right? I mean, I don't want to put anybody else on the board, you know, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I feel that's important to kind of address that.
Could you do one north or-
North and south. Yeah, at least, right? And I don't know, you know, if, you know, starting it right after the Christmas break, at least starting a plan for it would maybe be a good idea.
Can I come back with some recommended dates on the 9th?
I know it's kind of, you know, but we were talking about the calendar for January, so.